...one, getting comfortable if there's not. Mayor is not here yet, but it is 10:01. I'm gonna go ahead and call this special reading of the City Commission to order at this time. Jim?
Yes, sir. I was called in. The mayor actually came into my office yesterday morning, approximately nine o'clock, and asked for my resignation. I told the mayor that I was not resigning. He called for an immediate meeting today for the resignation of the city manager. So that's why we're here today.
Is there any discussion amongst the board?
Well, yeah, I would like to say a few words. I've worked with Jim for ten years, and I'd kinda like to walk you through a typical Jim Anderson work week. He comes to work around eight o'clock most every morning, leaves at five, doesn't go to cook out, doesn't go have drinks with his buddies, doesn't play golf, goes on to his family. That's Monday through Friday. Saturday, sometimes he and his dad go fishing when he's not with his wife and children. Sunday, he goes to church. Next Monday, repeats it all over again, fifty-two weeks out of the year. I think maybe he's gone on vacation sometime. I don't remember when it was, but it wasn't very long if he did. And so, you know, Jim's a native of Port St. Joe. He loves the city. He works hard for the city. And he doesn't sit in his office filing his nails and eating bonbons. He's a hard worker. And with that being said, I'd like to throw out a proposal to the board that we have a workshop. Any commissioner that has a problem with Jim or where he has deficiencies, let's work through those deficiencies. And I think in the end result, it will be better for the board, and it'll be better for Jim, and we can all work together. We've got to, you know, to make this city go forward, we need to work together. So I'd like to hear from other commissioners if that'd be like a workshop would be in order. I think that's the proper way to get this resolved.
Commissioner Rosette, I will absolutely mirror what you just said there and to add to that. About a year ago, when I returned back from the Leica Cities Conference, I brought back about seventeen examples of reviews that we can do for our staff that do work directly for the board. I think in that workshop, we need to definitely do that. How can you hold someone to a standard when they don't know what the standard is? So if anyone has a problem, we need to make sure that we let them know what that problem is. I would like to see us move forward at that process. I still have those seventeen examples. I can hand those over to our attorney and have him tailor one for our needs.
Sorry for being late, everybody. Where we at, Jim?
It's all yours now, man.
Where we at? Tell me where we at?
Discussing amongst the board. Two of us have spoken.
Okay. If I could just interject for just one moment, just to let everybody know we're here today. I appreciate everybody being here. We do need your input on everything we do. This is a personnel matter within the city, and we're here today. I would like to comment in just a minute on the memo that was sent out about this meeting today. The memo says termination of city manager Mayor Patterson. That's not what I had asked to be put on here. That's one of my problems today. Things get misconstrued when I say it. I did say I wanted to have a meeting today because when I got all those calls on Wednesday afternoon with all the extra things that were not true, some things were true, but there were a lot of untruths. Lot of them. So we're here today to discuss Jim Anderson as our city attorney, and him being able to lead us in this city matter. But the paperwork here said termination. My words were discussion of the city manager. I never used the word termination. I can guarantee everybody in this ring there. I had a witness in the room with me when I talked, and I will go back and ask that person to clarify that, but I'm pretty sure I didn't say termination. I've never said termination. So I just want to make that pretty clear. And just like to address the audience today that you will have your turn to speak. There are quite a few people here today, so I would ask you to, we're gonna limit you to three minutes, and I would ask you to stay on the agenda item. And I would ask you to refrain from clapping, loud hollering. Let's all be respectful of one another. And when we get to your turn, if you'll just raise your hand, I will point you to come up. And then when you do come up, you would just sign that paper right there before you start talking, and then give us your name and your address. All right? We'll...
Say something?
Sure.
Since this was brought to light, I've received numerous text messages that were untrue. I've called some of those people back and discussed what was going on. Continued to receive phone calls and hateful text messages, and most of that untrue. My wife's received phone calls and text messages, and it's, we're a tight-knit community, and it's, this has got out of control. I mean, I understand people's feelings, and one way or another, but it's bad when it gets hateful. It's bad when it gets hateful in a campaign race that's going on right now. I mean, it's, I ask everybody to continue our tight-knit, tight-knitness that we have within this community. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got something to say. I had many, many phone calls, many, many texts, text messages. I've had text messages from, and spoken to a lot of people in my community about the situation. And I'm my own man. I make my own decisions. I'm not a yes man. I don't appreciate some text message that was sent out. If you wanna see me, you know where to see me at. I'm not hard to find. I'm not a coward. I just wanna say that I support my community. I support the entire city of Port St. Joe, but I was born and raised in North Port St. Joe, Florida, and the opportunities that we've been denied for so long because we haven't had a voice, that's what I'm making my decision on. So if anybody got any questions or wanna see me, you know where to find me at.
That's all, Commissioner?
That's it.
Okay. Gentlemen, none of this is easy. Don't look at us and think this is easy for us, 'cause it's not. We have a hard job to do sometimes, and we have to make decisions. Sometimes they're the right ones, sometimes they're not the right ones, but we hope that we make the right decisions. As I say, at this time, I have lost confidence in Jim Anderson being able to run the day-to-day operations of the city. And that's why I'm at with it. I just...
Mayor, I spoke earlier, you weren't here, and I threw out a proposal for a workshop to work through deficiencies, work through the problems with Jim, let him know what we expect of him. And at the end of the day, like I said, I believe it would be positive for us, learn a good learning experience for us as well as Jim, and then we can all work together for the betterment of the city. I would like us to seriously consider that. I don't know if it needs to come to a vote, or we can just agree to have a workshop, but that's what I'd like to see.
Commissioner Rosette, I think I'm past that, and I'm to the point where I've also lost confidence in our city manager for the abilities to run our city. And I'm gonna put that in form of a motion to terminate his contract without cause and pay him his leave.
Without cause.
Pay him his salary.
Remember what I said to start with. Let's be respectful. That's all I ask you, be respectful. No loud. You'll have your turn to speak. Everybody, we'll try to let everybody we can speak today, but please...
We need to know why, the circumstance, why he's...
Ma'am, you don't have the floor right now. I mean, all this you have, and you can ask any questions you wanna ask. It's just a procedure that we go to him. And as I say, we're gonna let everybody talk. We're gonna limit you to three minutes, but if there's a large crowd here, we'd be here until the morning sometime.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think everybody in here has that same interest, and I think before there's any vote, if you should, you owe it to the citizens of this community that have voted all of y'all in before we do anything.
If I have an outbreak of clapping one more time, I will clear this room. I have to ask you... I mean, I'm just asking everybody to be respectful. Everybody's gonna do their thing.
Well, can you respect our question and answer it, please?
Exactly.
Mr....
If I can, I think the question is, if there was a motion made, was it for cause? Was it for without cause, or is it for lost faith and ability to perform duties? I think that's the question everyone's asking, and if it is for, for cause, what is that cause?
I wasn't prepared to do a whole lot of talking today, maybe...
That's what you're hired for. And this gentleman politely asked you, and it was seconded, politely asked you.
And is it time for them to speak?
Why? No, sir. No, sir. It is, the time is now. The gentleman...
Before we make a vote, you will speak. Before a vote, you will speak.
Well, he needs to give a why. We're gonna kick out the finest administrator we have.
Uh-huh.
Yes, sir. Why? Now, if you give a why, then we can make our own decision.
Let me go ahead and state something. I wasn't gonna state this in here today, but you're forcing me to.
Yes, sir.
Along with my reasons for Jim being dismissed, I have lived the last seven months in fear of my life. I don't laugh about it. He's prepping...
Everybody give the gentleman a speaking chance. We ask you, you tell us why now. We'll respect you.
Sure, exactly. Last September, we were going through budget session. I was trying to save these citizens some money, plus get you some more time for my code enforcer, okay? I went to Mr. Anderson's office and told him my intentions. Told him what I was gonna do. I went upstairs, I talked to the code enforcer. I got him to commit to more hours, giving us two Saturdays a month. He wasn't working any Saturdays. And I got him to drop his pay from twenty dollars to eighteen dollars. It would've been about the same money, but at least he got more hours, he would've gotten more pay. Well, I went and discussed it with him. We had a good discussion. Went back downstairs. I told Mr. Anderson what we talked about. He said, "Okay." I said, "If you don't mind, call the other commissioners and see what they think about it." Now, later on, he told me that I told him to tell the commissioners. I ain't never told him to tell nobody nothing. I can tell you that right now. No, I don't do that. I ask. I don't do that. I really don't. So at that time, I thought everything was fine. Come up to a meeting a few days later, and I thought everything was fine, as I say. So I'm fixing to tell the crowd what I was going on with the code enforcer, and I'm interrupted by Mr. Anderson and said, "That's not my job. That's his job." My question is, why didn't he tell me that when I was face-to-face with him in his office? Why would he wait till meeting time to do it? You know, wanting to embarrass me or what? I don't know what it was. But I'm getting to it if you'll give me time.
We will.
You asked me to speak, and I'm speaking for what I know is right.
Apologize. Go ahead.
That's okay. But anyway, the next morning, I went in to talk to Mr. Anderson about what happened at the meeting, and we were just having, you know, friendly, you know, conversation about what happened. We weren't hollering, yelling at one another or nothing. But just like he's doing right now, he looked at me and smiled and smirked and pointed his finger at me. Said, "Mr. Mayor, if you don't leave me alone, I'm gonna bring fire and fury on you." Hey, I went straight to the sheriff's office. Well, I believed him. I believed what he told me. Ain't no reason to lie to me. He'll bring fire and fury. And it sounds fun, funny to all of you, but if you were me and somebody threatened you with your life, it wouldn't be funny. I guarantee you it wouldn't. It wouldn't be funny. And that's what happened that day in his office. He got us what he may say later. I'm not a liar. That's what was said, and I promise you that. I'm here to help everybody in this town. That's all I always say when I come on board. I'm here to help everybody. That's the only reason I'm a mayor, is to help people. But that's one reason why.
Is that the only reason?
No, sir. There's some other reasons.
Just one?
No, sir. There's more.
There's more? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that was the reason.
That is one reason. Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. My name is Samuel Warren Aberson Sr. I live beside Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'd like to interject real quick.
Time out. Time out. If you don't mind, let us get this done, and then when you're finished, you talk.
Yes, sir.
So we really need you to come up to the press.
I want to say something else about the code enforcement officer you're speaking about. The day you had that conversation with him in his office, keep in mind, he served this county twenty-seven years flawlessly as a sheriff's deputy. He works part-time for the city. And the day you had that conversation with him in his office, I had to take him to the emergency room because they thought he was having a heart attack. His blood pressure was so high. Did you or did you not tell him you'd also have his job if he did not work every other Saturday?
Ma'am, I did not.
Every other Saturday is the only day, every other Saturday is the only day he has to spend with our children. He works thirteen days straight without day off.
He resigned and did another job.
Because... He does a job. He does a job. He does a job. He brings, does, answer me this, does he not bring a lot of money to the city with title searches, fines, all of that?
I wanna hear the rest of your experience.
Come on, Mr. Mayor. We got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
We have two motions.
Clarify the motion. What was it?
You're not gonna vote?
Not until we talk the whole, not until we talk the whole. We're just getting a motion.
They have a second at first.
Yeah, we gotta have a second, and then we're gonna ask for your input. We're gonna do this thing very calmly.
Motion was on the floor to terminate Mr. Anderson without cause, pay him his leave based on his policy and his severance.
I have a motion. I have a second.
I'd like to say something first.
Excuse me just a second. Didn't ready to bring a motion up before anybody did. Didn't turn on, right? We're not supposed to use that motion yet.
I made a proposal for a workshop.
I thought you made a motion at a workshop.
I'd like to say something first. Hold it down, please.
Can you hear me?
I've known Jim most of my life, and me, my decision is dedicated to the people of Port St. Joe, Florida. My concern is about North Port St. Joe. What I believe is that there's certain things that should've been done on North Port St. Joe that haven't been done. If you, I can explain everything to you. First, the, North Port St., since I've been the commissioner, I've found out that there's other kind of income that you can get for low-income, low-income communities. Opportunities are zone-funded. It was pushed back. The rezoning of Martin Luther King Boulevard, which was discussed several times in 2017, publicly several times, and it hasn't been moved forward. And I've received phone calls from my constituents on North Port, in North Port St. Joe, and they haven't had a voice to represent them in years. So my job is, first of all, the entire community. Secondly, is to take care of my community, which I was born and raised in. So with that said, I think that we need to click, start over and find us a new city manager.
So is that your second?
My second.
Well, we have a first and a second. And if you guys always wanna speak, please raise your hand. I saw that one in the back first.
He's standing.
I saw that one first. I was there when I saw that one first.
You have to speak, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to tell everybody about him threatening to kill me. Let me take my spot. Hold on, Jim's gonna speak. Jim wants to speak.
Thank you, Reece. Just have one quick thing to say.
Sign it. Yes, sir. Hold it right there. Yes, sir.
If I can for just a minute. I work for the citizens of Port St. Joe. Yes, I work in the direction of the city commissioner. I'm trying to do the best job I can for the people and the money, and have not broken any laws in the state of Florida or any ordinances within the city of Port St. Joe. At this point, I ask the board to follow the city charter. The city charter says, "Per Section 34 of the City of Port St. Joe Charter, I demand written charges and a public hearing upon the same before the commission, and my removal shall not take effect until such hearing has been had for the record."
Okay. Please sign in and state your name and address.
My name's Turner Echols. I live at 805 16th Street.
Please stay on the agenda item, but you're not gonna be able to talk about me.
Well, no, you said you've got charges against him. I'm gonna talk about you, you, you and me, and you threatening me.
I don't know what you're talking about. I know you wrote a nasty letter about me and my girlfriend. It was all lies. Now get back. Get back!
Last Tuesday, his sister's restaurant...
Get this man away from the podium.
His sister's restaurant. The mayor started calling me a liar.
Chief, get him out again. Share, share in, I'm gonna share.
He's investigated a threat to me that was made through his ex, his girlfriend to the ex-husband, well, it was her husband at the time, that he was seeing. 'Cause the mayor showed up at my house screaming and yelling. I have witnesses for that. I have about thirty witnesses.
How long ago was that?
Just two and a half years ago.
Okay.
That, yeah. But what happened in sister's last Tuesday is fresh.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
What can I do in this situation? He's not staying on the program.
No, you're talking about people giving death threats. I've got witnesses of death threats by you and your girlfriend.
Mayor, this time, the city manager has requested written charges...
Calling me a liar?
And requested a formal hearing. I suggest to the board that we reconvene this so that he can have the opportunity to see those written charges as he's so demanded.
Okay. And we do no action today, is that what you're saying?
The only action pursuant to the charter that the city can take is to suspend him pending the formal hearing that he has demanded.
You really don't want me to talk, do you? Let's talk about calling me a liar.
Get him out of here. He wanna talk about personal fraud.
I think you did a drug test. Were you submitted to a drug test? Were you submitted to a drug test?
Sir, sir. I can ask you serious questions. It's not about...
This is serious.
Yes, sir, it's serious.
It's real serious.
Yes, sir, agreed. I ask you questions that are specific to the matter.
There's been an investigation he doesn't know about.
Again, Mayor, this time, the city manager's managed to the enforcement of Section 34, which requires written charges. The only action item at this point the city can take is to suspend him by read, if you read through the charter. My suggestion is, at the very least, that this matter be reconvened so that the city can provide Mr. Anderson with the written charges he has so demanded and he's so entitled to. The only other item that this commission in regards to this can take up is whether or not to suspend him until such time that hearing has been had. There's, legally, there's no other option for the city commission at this point. Mr. Anderson is entitled to his hearing, and he's entitled to the written charges. So the only action item right now that the city can take as to Mr. Anderson is to whether or not to suspend him until such time.
What do we do with the motion?
You have to withdraw.
You have to withdraw the motion until such time as the hearing's been had. After the hearing is concluded and Mr. Anderson's man has been met, then the city will have to take action at that point.
I would like, I would like to hear some of the citizens have to say before you take any more action, whether to withdraw the motion or whatever, but I would like to hear what the citizens have to say.
Absolutely. Probably withdraw. Anyways, you were withdrawing.
You're doing your duty, sir.
I withdraw a second.
I withdraw my first.
All right. Now, Mr. Anderson has already asked for this public hearing, so we're gonna still at the public talk, and we'll start with you, sir.
Reece Anley, 464 Angel Fish Street. First, let me just say something to the commission. You guys work for us, the people. As you can see by the people that are here and what you're gonna hear next, Jim Anderson is the one person at City Hall that stands for anything for the most part. I'm just being honest. There's a few people up there for the most part, but you guys work for us. So to come in here and fire him without cause, the cause should be that the people are crying out for a termination where he's done something wrong. But the state is, you've lost, Brett, you've lost, you've lost confidence, is that correct? So what is the, why did you lose confidence? Has he done something in his job that you guys have recommended him for to lose confidence? This isn't Bo's Pest Control. This isn't Bezett's Drug Store. This is the city of Port St. Joe. This isn't Woods Fisheries where I can fire whoever I want to whenever I want to. This is the city. He works for us. So why did you lose confidence in him?
I'll discuss that later.
This is the time to discuss it.
I'll discuss it up here.
He's answering here.
I understand that, but us as the city, as the, as the people that put you in office, that put every one of you in office, you owe us the explanation so we can make our call on whether Jim should be fired or he should stay on. At this point, you guys are looking to just have a vendetta against Jim.
Promise we don't.
I don't know.
You can handle pressure. You should resign.
And this, I'm just gonna end with this, 'cause there's a lot of people who wanna talk. But for the meeting that you called at ten o'clock, you were late. They had to start without our mayor.
And without our president.
Well, does that, that, that to me is a write-up. If my people are late at work, you're written up. You're here with a bunch of people that took off work out of respect for everybody here. You should've been here on time.
I thought I was getting here on time.
Yeah, okay. Listen, I, I think you guys should be held to the same standard we are, and I'm not going down the petty thing, but I do believe you need to take a drug test and a sobriety test.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Paula Pickett, 108 Sunset Circle, Port St. Joe. I have worked in public service through the county as well as the Chamber of Commerce for over fourteen years. I have worked with three city managers. I have never worked with a finer person than Jim Anderson. I have met with him on a variety of occasions over the last years. Never has he made any, any threatening statements to me, and I've asked him some tough questions, and we've jumped some hurdles together. Never has he had anything but the utmost respect for me, and I would venture to say anybody else in this room that's been in his office. He does work for me. He is the one I go to when I have problems. I've never called any one of you. You're welcome. I know how to get my problems solved, and Jim Anderson does it. And he does it respectfully and timely. You guys have a hard job. I completely respect your ability to run for office. You've shown tenacity and thick skinniness sometimes to your own detriment. I urge you to listen to these people. You may have lacked confidence for some personal reason with Jim, but nobody in here has. In fact, I've got more confidence in him than I do any one of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Amy Rogers, and I signed my name on the sign-in pad, registered voter and a citizen of Port St. Joe. I am concerned with, as I received one of your documents, I did not see where there was any poor work performance, no evaluation that was taking place for Mr. Anderson, the question to have him terminated. I, when I would make a conscious decision on voting, I wanna know what I'm voting for. I just don't wanna vote because sanso told me to vote for this person, to vote for that person, pass your piece of baby, vote for that person. I'm an educated person, and I'd like to know what I'm voting for. And as I read the paragraph, although inside, according to the paragraphs, again, has no evaluation been taken place, no, he has no discrepancies in his work performance, and I'd like to leave here today with some facts of what has happened regarding his work performance. Now, he's been ins... Now, he's been insubordinated. I didn't see anything like insubordination. I feel like a situation like this, the city do, we still practice affirmative action where you stated that you're equal opportunity employee person. There is a process and a procedure that the city has gone about with other employees where they call it fact-finding conference. With this particular matter, it might be the city commissioners, but then some of the people in this workplace area, it'd be a fact-finding conference so they can go gather the facts up and then bring it back to the board and find out that's what you act on. But one day thing with no work, no work discrepancies and no problem with his work performance, I can't vote on anything like that. And as a citizen and a registered voter, I want to be able to vote on facts. Let's do a workshop as such, as Commissioner Bozette has stated earlier about a workshop so you can gather up the facts for individual. And it's what, I have to disagree with you a little bit, Commissioner Langston, there having some work that the city has done for North Port St. Joe.
I didn't say the city didn't do any work for St. Joe. I said we've been deprived for a long time on the north side. That's what my statement was.
Well, okay, well.
I know you can't disagree with that.
Yes, we have.
If you disagree with that, I don't understand what you're talking about.
I guess we have socially, we're socially deprived and been depressed for many, many years, but there are several things that the city has helped with North Port St. Joe.
Well, they always have. I never say they didn't. I never say they didn't.
But we.
I say we've been deprived.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I said. That's what I stated.
Okay, yes, I agree with you on we've been socially deprived. We're a socially deprived community, but with the fact that I do know the city has helped somewhere, they're very short on a lot of things that need to be done, but majority of the things that need to be done is for us to act for and all of our community. We want, we want to stay in within the area that we can receive funds with the current C R A, but if we go and restrict that to another section only.
Miss Amy, we're not talking about the C R A. We're not talking about it.
What I'm just saying that that's one of the ways that we get help. See, sometime we shoot our own self in the foot.
Right.
And not realizing until they are on. So we want, what I'm saying right now is that we want to get some help for the entire community and not say, they say that we're no socially deprived.
I said, I'm, I'm, I represent the entire community.
Yes.
I said that before I said anything about the north side. What I said was, I represent the entire community, but I was born and raised in North Port St. Joe, and we haven't had a voice in ten years, almost ten years, to come up and represent what we need over on the north side. I didn't say I didn't, I didn't represent the entire north, the entire community of Port St. Joe, Florida.
I'm not, I'm not, but we have had.
Your three minutes is up, Miss Amy.
We have had many commissioners, African American, and we have had some help, but we not fulfilled it yet, and that's all I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
The dream is unfulfilled, and I guess it doesn't.
Well, thank you for your time, Miss Amy. Thank you.
You're quite welcome, sir.
Come on up. Sign in, please.
I've signed in already. Okay. My name is Lisa Matthews. I live at three twelve Avenue F. And I think this whole setting is all a little bit much. I think that you commissioners with Mr. Anderson have gotten a little bit out of concert, contact. But I agree with Mr. Langston. I've only been back here since twenty thirteen, and I've seen things that are just outrageous. We've sent paperwork to Mr. Anderson that he hasn't responded to as far as the PAC, and he pushed them aside, and we've gotten numerous phone calls saying, well, where's the paperwork? Where's the rezoning paperwork? And they're sitting on Mr. Anderson's desk. So I'm saying we need someone that's going to take our cause serious. We live there, and sometime it gets a little bit hard to live there because of what I'm seeing, what I don't see, what the need is, and what's not being generated in North Port St. Joe.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Lagnor, four oh one Twentieth Street. Just trying to summarize everything that's kind of going on is, with respect to Mr. Langston, what you said about, first off, being north side, Port St. Joe, until the city can move on as one.
And again, I see that.
I'm speaking. I understand what you said. I understand what you said. But Mr. Anderson works at the, at the pleasure of the commission, correct?
Sure.
So if there have been issues with things not being done that Mr. Jim is not doing, as we do this meeting, Jim is asked for a meeting to hear the accusations. As a citizen, I want to see documentation of where he did not do what you asked him to do. And specifically, things that I can respect.
Lisa Matthews.
I can, I can respect what you're saying, and I, yes, ma'am, I don't know if you remember me or not, but. But I would like to see personally, things that he has not done for his job, if that makes any sense. Because all, because I come to two meetings and all I ever hear is each one of you guys get up there and say which, why you're doing this is for the people. You know, I'm doing this, I'm all for you, I'm here for you, I want to do what you want to do. I represent everybody, but there's no facts. And I need to see facts. I need to see facts so we can make a decision and not just without cause, not just willy-nilly. I mean, this is official. And I know Jim personally, and I'm coming into this as open-minded as I can. I respect him, just like I respect each and every one of you. I want to hear what he has to say just as much I want to hear what you guys have to say. So as we come to this next meeting, I hope you come with more than just emotions and feelings and thoughts, and I want to see facts where he has not done the things that you've asked him to do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Samuel Warren Amerson Senior. I live at five twelve Eighth Street, Port St. Joe, Florida. I'm pretty much raised here. Mr. Mayor, and every one of you commissioners, I have all the respect for y'all. Do not get me wrong. I'm here because the city administrator, no matter where I live, but me living, reasonably close to the Joe. You take a gentleman that, 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 that likes to hunt and fish, if he's a hard worker, which he normally is if he does that, because it takes money to do that. Well, Mr. Jim, he likes making things very pretty, beautiful, spending his time doing that. When he's not at work and not with his family, he's working on his house. Not ten, eleven o'clock in the morning, drinks coffee at the crack of daylight, and that gentleman's working. To me, that tells me that when that man's at work, he's working just as hard. As leaders, we should know this. As our main leader, Mr. Bo, you should know this. Fine example on this meeting. I could get into it and I could get hostile, but believe me, I'm trying not to. The accusation that you said, and I rudely interrupted, and I very apologize for that.
I saw it.
Because you'd have probably really buried yourself. But for you to say that man pointed at you like that and said what you said, I know word for word, sir, when you sit down tonight and think about the way you started this meeting out, you need to think word for word for what you said about this gentleman. I've seen him hit his hand with a hammer, squish his foot, and somebody like Mike said to you, the good Lord don't want to hear what I have to say. This man is, plays with his children every evening. Every evening. And I'm going to try to end it right here and say, if I lived where I live or if I lived in Timbuktu, what I know of that gentleman, he never made them accusations. And, and, and what did you say your memo read?
The one that was supposed to be on here.
No, sir, what? Did you hand it up?
This one, this one says termination, but it's wrong.
Termination for Bo Patterson? That's what you said, ain't it? That's what you said. And sir, you say all these fine citizens of this community, it might be true.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Come on up.
Johnny Linton, twenty twenty-five Marvin Avenue. I want you to hear what I'm saying. I hung out the door of a helicopter for two years, got shot at every day, all the time. It never, I never went to a judge, I never went to anybody else complaining about it. I live with it. He didn't do anything wrong by saying something that was on his conscience. He just said, and it's nothing we can do about that. But we live in a city that the water bill or some damn high, you can't even drink the water. You can't bathe the water. My water bill, a hundred and ninety-two hundred dollars every sticking month. And we got five, six, five commissioners up here, and they go on a trip every month, every year, because I went, I was his mayor, I was city commissioner.
I helped you.
Okay.
I campaigned for you.
But I'm telling you right now, there better be some changes or there gonna be some changes. It is, we're gonna change. Jim is the best man I've ever met in my life. He goes to my church, he's Christian, he's a leader in the church, he's a really fine person, he's got a great family, and I'm gonna tell you what, there's three or four of you on here that won't be here next year if you mess with you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Benny Roberts.
Hey, Mr. Ben.
And I'm the historian in this building. I served three city managers, Charlie Brock three times, Hall of Affairs one time. So I'm talking about, I'm talking about twenty-six years of service I was at city commission. I worked for the city for five years, training out in the ballparks and running the recreation. So I've been in the city hall thirty-one years. So I, I, I know about what went on and who went on with. So anyway, city managers became a problem. Right, Mr. Payton wanted to be city manager. So city manager had a lot more power in a sense than Charlie Brock. Charlie Brock was a, was a bookkeeper, and he'd say right quick, we ain't got the money. I mean, he, 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 he didn't have money, we didn't do it. When I left the city, we had three million dollars in students' capital. In two years, it was two million dollars in hold. You know, people don't mind spending somebody else's money. It's easy to spend somebody else's. So, but politicians are really kind of bad at spending somebody else's. No, no, and it doesn't matter if you have to borrow it, you know, it don't matter. I mean, the city, what, what do y'all got, a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred twenty thousand dollars? That, that you have to pay off a bad water bill? Y'all got that? Is that correct? Is that pretty close? Is that pretty close? Yeah, you pay off every one. And did you ever think about this? The people that have bad water bills that live at the beach don't live in the city of Port St. Joe. And when you take city tax dollars to subsidize somebody that don't pay his water bill, you taking my money to pay his water bill. You think about that? Y'all think about it? Now, this, this situation has gotten out of hand, and I've, I've only had three occasions to talk to the city manager. Courteous, diligent, did what he said he was going to do, and then next day it happened. I could not ask for any better service. And so, I, all I'm saying is, you might want to look at your home set. And by the way, you was talking about North Port St. Joe. When I was on that board, I went and brought to the north side of the county. And the guy came to me and said, Benny, y'all want water and sewer, but I can get you some money for recreation. I said, how much? He said, well, we'll ask a hundred twenty thousand. And we had just traded the, the north side along with the school board. We traded them for that baseball park over there, gave that to the school. So we traded out. So then we did, we had to tear a building down, but we didn't have any money to fix it up. So this guy came by and he said, hey, if you'll ask for a grant for that, you can get it, because they own recreation this year. So I went back over there. He come up, called me back, he said, we're going to ask for a hundred twenty thousand. We got ninety-five thousand dollars. That was a grant that wasn't the north side that people say, well, they never, one of the candidates that ran said, oh, we never got any grants over that, you got ninety-five thousand. Then they turned around and told me, excuse me, next question.
Running the three minutes up on.
Okay, uh, next, next, uh, the next, the next name was, we got another grant, fifty thousand. So we, North Port St. Joe has been remembered. I promise. Been remembered.
Or a walk-up didn't look. It ain't been remembered. Well, I'll say that it ain't been remembered. You never looked at it.
Well, you know who's running now? Y'all threw up to the camera. Amen, bro.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Benny. Thank you, sir.
Hey, from where I grew up, North Port St. Joe is improving a great lot, and that's the only thing I did say. And it comes from that man making things look.
He says improved.
Right. It, 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 it is improving. You say you grew up here. I grew up here too, my friend.
Hey, gentlemen, please. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm retired now. I had the age of sixty-nine years old. I've been a citizen of this community all my life, the entire sixty-nine years. I started participating in politics back in nineteen eighty-five when I was first elected to city commissioner. And I went on and became a county commissioner for twenty-four consecutive years. Now, I do know something about politics and the way it works. I want to say that from nineteen eighty-five, when I was elected to city commissioner, I had relationships with all the board members and all the people that worked for the city. And I knew all the way up to Jim. Jim came in, I believe it was in two thousand and twelve, it'd been about six years, that next. And I've, I've had relationship with managers before him. And I had relationship with him his entire six years. I'm gonna tell you something, and this is the God-heaven truth. I don't know a better person that we could have in that position, than Jim. He's been honest, and he's been supportive of my community. He can't do it, Langston. He can't. You just got there. He can't do it that fast. Government don't work that way.
I, I wasn't saying that. I wasn't saying that it can happen.
Overnight.
Overnight. I was saying that throughout the years, and, and you, you was city commissioner, that's been a while, you county commissioner, and pretty fine. But the thing about it is that we've been these past ten years, we just been deprived. I mean, and the guy said, you can go over there and look at it right now, the only thing that we got standing on MLK is your business. And I'm not saying that's bad, that's a good thing because it makes people want to strive to do better, but we need more things to come in to try to help us.
Yeah, but Langston, you remember when Avenue A was completely tore up?
Yes, sir.
And they put in a new sewer system in that, in, on Avenue A, all the way down?
Yes, sir.
And then, and then we had problems with the water, not just North Port St. Joe, but all of Port St. Joe had problems with the water. And they worked with us to get that fixed. We got pretty good water now. You understand? And it takes time to do that, but I'm here to say that Mr. Anderson, I don't know of a better person to have in that position, and I support him one hundred percent. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I'm Travis Burge. I live in two thousand and eleven Garrison Avenue, Port St. Joe. Most of you know me, I've been here, telling them my age, sixty years. I just want to speak on behalf of Jim. I've been on the P D R B for two, maybe going on three years. Nothing but respect for Jim. Jim is a man of integrity, of interacting with him on this board with issues, and he has brought nothing but integrity, and he has got the cities and the taxpayers of this community at heart in everything he does, and that's a fact, that's still in with him straight. Some of you know me, some don't. Rex, Bozette, appreciate the kind comments and the diplomatic approach that he brought And I'll tell you, if your granddaddy was around, he'd roll over, son. That is not diplomatic, what you're doing. Mr. Bezette has brought something to the table that was ignored, made the motion anyway. Eric, I've known your mama back, used to work years ago, back in the eighties, good woman. I remember when you were in her arms. And I'm gonna tell you something, to insert your heart, do it a diplomatic way, don't come in here and be led. I feel like you're led.
No, I'm not.
I really do.
Yeah, that's the message, hang on, D.
Mr. Mayor, had the privilege of talking to you a couple of days ago, uh, my dad called you, called me over there, we had our discussion, and in that discussion, I told you what some of the rumors were that I heard because I wanted to know, I did not know. But we have a right as citizens, everyone in this room, it's here to represent Mr. Anderson, and we're asking you to be diplomatic. Do not let petty personality clashes, differences spoil your ability as mayor. I think you've already done that. But both are wrong. What you told me wasn't nothing but a personality clash. Now, isn't that, well, I understand there's a process, a diplomatic process that Mr. Bezette has brought to the table, and it needs to be followed. You don't just come in and threaten the man to resign, if that's what's true, without any due process. It's ridiculous. And the people in this community are tired of it. Don't know what's in the background behind it, if there's any motivation, or there was. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, mentioned to you those rumors and the fact that it, Mr. Lowery had approached Mr. Anderson, is a story I heard, and in that story, I said, you know, there's others that were mentioned behind Mr. Lowery with this, and you come out with a name, and I'm not gonna, let's don't name drop, but you pretty much, in my opinion, told on yourself when you brought that up, when you named a name.
I don't talk to you like that, you.
I didn't name a name.
Yeah.
So, what I, what I like to say, just in closing, I challenge everyone, look at each other, search your soul, and one of you has initiated this, somebody has, it took one, the smoke started with one of you and it went from there. So, put it on the table instead of under the table. All I ask.
Good morning, I'm Grant Johnson, I live at 128 Harris, Detroit, Fort St. Joe, Florida. I had the privilege many years ago to serve on this board, and during that time, I had the privilege of working with Mr. Anderson. We had some bad, bad economic times at that time. In fact, I remember one meeting where Mr. Weston, Mr. Anderson and I sat down, we didn't know how we were gonna meet payroll in two years, or two weeks. We worked hard, we called special meeting, we got it resolved, but it was Mr. Anderson who led the charge and helped us understand where we were. Since that time, this man, with his staff, has created a positive balance in the city. I commend him for that, and y'all are crazy as heck if you run him off. He's the only one up there that has any idea what's going on, and if y'all lose this leadership, you're gonna be on a slope that's gonna go downhill so fast, the freight train couldn't stop it. So, I'm asking you to reconsider, do like what some of the other speakers have said, talk to the man, if you have issues, work them out like a normal human being would do that runs a successful business. This is a major business, and y'all operate it like two kids with a baseball. I, it, it's got to stop. It, I had a very intelligent man one time tell me, Greg, don't ever criticize somebody in public. You criticize in private, you praise in public. But I can't do that with y'all today, cause I'm not happy with you. I, I too believe that there's something going on behind the scenes that has caused this. Mr. Anderson has stepped on somebody's toes by telling them what the charter says and what his marching orders adopted by y'all says do. I honestly believe that. And sometimes, since I got off this board, y'all initiated a, uh, an increase in your compensation to cover your cell phone usage. If I'm not mistaken, each of you get a stipend each month for your cell phone. Is that correct?
Sure.
Well, today, I formally request him, under the Florida statute number 10, chapter 119, section 119, number 1, a copy of every one of your cell phone bills from May 8th of the 1st, 2011.
Hold down, please. Yes, ma'am.
Fort St. Joe, Florida. First of all, we should have prayed, because there's enough heat in here to start a fight. So we need Jesus, that's who we need.
And all I have to say is that I've known this man since he was in second grade, but there's a lot of people that I know. I want everybody to deep inside dig in your heart, ask God to watch over you, because a lot of people are not right. And if you do what's right in your heart, we wouldn't be having this meeting today. You people have got to change, myself as well, get your heart right, and stop doing favoritism for one and not the other one. Get it right with God.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Quinn Lamb, I live at 1304 Homme Boulevard.
I'm sorry.
Talk up a little.
1304 Homme Boulevard. I, at one time, was director of the People Helping People program, and I had many opportunities to deal with Jim, in helping people with their, uh, their fuel bills, with food, et cetera. Not once did I ever have a rejection with Jim or a problem with Jim relative to bringing a citizen's problems to him. He worked with me, he was cooperative, he was understanding of people's problems. As a matter of fact, yesterday, I went to the north side and got some petitions signed in favor of supporting Jim, and I don't know how many people remembered me and said to me how wonderful Jim was in helping get the problem solved. And he was absolutely understanding, I don't think we ever had an argument, we may had a disagreement on, on what figure to arrive at, but he was absolutely outstanding. And I would back that lady that just spoke before me, that in my 82 years of living, I cannot believe what I'm seeing or hearing this morning. I have owned companies, I have run companies, large companies. Never, I hope never, in my day, would we have ever treated an employee as you people are treating Jim this morning. It's disgusting, and you need to really step back and take a look at yourself. But my support goes for Jim 100%, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charles, together with 118 Liberty Street, I'm here, not supporting, but I am supporting. But the fight of it is, I think we here for the wrong reason, because the fight, it shouldn't be about Jim, it should be about policies and procedures. Now, if we were gonna house, and, and, yeah, I can say this, former employee at City, Fort St. Joe, um, running recreation department for a long time, and, uh, but policies and procedures, if we had them in place, we wouldn't be here doing this today. Because first of all, if you had agreements with whoever, then you got a grievance committee that should have went through them to see if you had just cause to even be here today. Now, my thing is this, I'm also a preacher in this community, been one for over 32 years. I don't care what you say, he say, because everybody got a story to tell. And everybody gonna make their side look as best as they possible can, but the fight of the matter is, I don't care who it is, everybody's due process of being fair. And you guys sit here, like I said, you here to represent the people. Now, I will agree, now, I heard some stuff about the grants, oh, I know a lot of grants that come, but I know that they went, they came in one area, and then they went somewhere else to put pipes somewhere else, and it was named somewhere else. Yeah, I do know that too, but like I said, I'm not here for that today. The city need to have, do you have a policy in place, how you deal with employers? Is, is, is anybody look at it, Jack, from what I heard, Jack is perfect. Did he get recommended anytime? Did anybody write him up for insubordination? See what I'm saying? This what, what I'm saying, we, we can, yeah, we can get a cause because I don't care who y'all, if you can get enough people supporting it, it'll make a lot of people change their mind, but if you do things from your heart and your mind, that when you go home at the end of the night, you can rest in peace. You're not gonna, you're not gonna make everybody happy, but you know what you did from your heart was the best decision that you was making for the people. Not because I'm mad at Mr. Langston, not because I'm mad at Mr. Bo, I'm not here for that. I'm here simply to say that the city need to have some type of policy in place so that they can deal with employees. What I'm seeing, and this is what I feel, the city will work you all their, your life, and when the time for them to stand up for you, you're out on the boat by yourself. So, so my thing is, before you wanna do what you're doing, I think we need to kinda regroup and look at the situation from your heart and see it as justified. Maybe, I don't know what happened, I'm not gonna get into you say, he say, but it may be that he might need to be ruled up, but why, is it bad enough to terminate a man? This man, and, and I'm saying, whoever, if they got a family, they gotta feed people. And if you get mad at me because I tell you or come up and say something that you don't like, and you just get rid of me, that's, you know what I'm saying? Cause I don't care who y'all, we gonna have some difference. You have, in, in, in the most sacred place you can have, is in the church, and you have differences there. So I don't care where you go, you gonna have difference, but it's where you, it, it's all depending on how you handle your differences. So, and like I said, this is what I'm here, I'm not seeing Mr. Anderson, I'm seeing the problem. And this problem, if you do, do it with him, you do it with other employees, and you don't have a guideline, you gonna have this issue from time to time. But if you got a guideline and procedure, that they need to be followed, and they need to be followed for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles.
I'm Sam Emerson Jr., 521 Ninth Street. I've lived here for 32 years, my entire life. Mr. Bo, I say that with all respect, Mr. Bo, honestly, I have some questions about you, but that's not what we're here for. I'm gonna comment towards you saying that Mr. Jim got hostile with you in the office, per se. I have a four-month-old daughter that I love with all of my heart, I will die for. If I ever had to leave it with somebody outside of my family, Mr. Jim would be the first person I'd leave him with. Do you think I would leave him, leave her with him, knowing that he has a hostile mean attitude or anything like that? I don't think so. That's, that's towards your reason why you feel like you're, you're threatened by him. I wouldn't do that. Brett, I, I grew up watching you, you know, in high school, wanted, I mean, wanted to be your friend, wanted to talk to you and everything else. I, I mean, for you, for you to be up here on this board, and for somebody in this audience to ask you a question, you go, I ain't got no responsibility right now. When you put, when you put that name and that tag in front of you, you gotta respond to us when we ask you a question. I'm sorry, that's part of the job. Bo said it himself, if our code enforcement officer needs to find another job, well, if you can't answer the questions that are brought to you, maybe you need to find another job. I hate that, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. I mean, Mr. Langston, I can understand completely where you're coming from, I've got plenty of friends over there, I'd do anything in the world for them, love them to death, but it takes time, and I understand where you're coming from, but it takes time, it takes effort, it takes, it takes blood, sweat and tears, and it will come, I promise you, it will come. All you gotta do is work and be patient. But Mr. Jim, he's a fine man, he works hard, I see it day in and day out. I'm around town all day, every day, five days a week. Mr. Bezette, he put a good thing on, idea on there, everybody's talking about it. I don't think, we've had one person come up here and say, yeah, Mr. Jim needs to be gone, because nobody believes it. If you got a personal vendetta with him after hours, you need to pull him to the side, Mr. Jim, can I talk to you? And we hash this out like two grown men, and not like a little kid in the candy, in the playground, in the, in the playground. That's the way I feel about it. Now, he hasn't done his job, it's your job as his bosses to get rid of, to come to and say, hey, I've been pulled off to the side of my job plenty of times, hey, you need to work on your attitude, hey, you need to work on your productivity, you know? Hey, they gave me a chance, guess what? I heard it loud and clear. I kept my job, I'm gonna keep my job, just like Mr. Jim will. And that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you.
My name's Barb Ventrees, 1311 McClellan Avenue, and I wanna thank you commissioners for having a meeting, I wish it wasn't under the circumstances. Bo, you have worked and helped me out with some problems, and I do appreciate that. But Mr. Anderson has come to my aid when I came to him with a sign problem for the Humane Society. We had to go through state, we had to go through city, and we had to go through county. He took me step by step, four weeks, to get this thing done because of his knowledge of what he needed, what I needed. I'd go to him and he'd say, no, Ms. Barb, this isn't right, you gotta have it this way, and I'd go back and get it done, bring it to him. He is somebody that replacing him is going to almost be impossible for the knowledge that he has had for the years that he has served this community. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to thank the, uh, the star first, for announcing this meeting in the paper. Uh, it wasn't on the city's webpage, on the, it was not on the city's webpage for an announcement on the city resources. Uh, I suppose the only way you would know about this is either through the, the Citizens' Network or to go to the city hall and happen to see the flyer that you post.
I don't know why it wasn't on the website.
Well, I, I don't know either.
They don't put it there.
I know, uh, there's a lot of stuff that's not on the webpage, that, that should be, but that's, that's not on topic, so I'll leave that alone. Uh, I'd like to thank the citizens, you know, my wife and I.
You have to turn around and talk to us.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. Oh, no, I can't talk to them.
You're impressing us today.
Yes, sir, well, I'd like to.
You can talk louder than.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the citizens for being here, I'd love to see this many people here every other Tuesday night to see what you're doing every single meeting. Mr. Langston, uh, at the last meeting, you voted yes for an $8,000 paint job on the, uh, on the locomotive.
I'd like to thank the, the star first for announcing this meeting in the paper. It wasn't on the city's webpage, on the, it was not on the city's webpage for an announcement on the city resources. I suppose the only way you would know about this is either through the Citizens Network or to go to the City Hall and happen to see the flyer that you post.
I don't know why it wasn't on the website.
Well, I, I don't know either.
We don't put it there.
I know, there's a lot of stuff that's not on the webpage that should be, but that's, that's not on topic, so I'll leave that alone. I'd like to thank the citizens. You know, my wife and I-
Sir, you have to turn around and talk to us.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, no, I can't talk to them.
You're pressing us today.
Yes, sir. Well, I'd like to-
But you can talk loud enough.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the citizens for being here. I'd love to see this many people here every other Tuesday night to see what you're doing every single meeting. Mr. Langston, at the last meeting, you voted yes for an $8,000 pay job on the, on the locomotive.
I think we all voted yes.
Yes. So, well, if you wanted to help certain areas of Port St. Joe, namely to the north, you might have voted no.
Well, if you were at the meeting, you would have sold, where we got some beautification coming out MLK.
Absolutely. I was at that meeting.
Well, $4,000. You say anything about that?
Well-
Everybody bid no.
Because, because single-source contracts not bid out, somewhat, everybody says yes to you, you say, everybody says yes to everybody else, it's, it's a mutual admiration society up here, and you're saying yes to each other. More specifically, I'd like to thank the press for being here. That's outstanding, because we want people to see what you're doing. Mayor meeting with individual commissioners or city council members. If a mayor or a member of the council has a voice in the decision-making through the power to break tie votes, meetings between the mayor and a member of the city council to discuss some matter which come, which may come before the city council are subject to the sunshine law. So when one or more of you, two of you get together outside of this meeting without that meeting being open to the public, that reasonable notice be given, and that the minutes of the meeting are to be taken and promptly recorded, then that's a violation of the sunshine law. As discussed by some of the other citizens present today, it seems or appears, and it may be hard to prove, that certain members of this board got together, I hate to use the word colluded, and decided that somebody had to go. And for what reason? We've already acknowledged through the citizens present that Jim is a fantastic person. He's a great manager. My estimation of this is specifically that he said no, or is not on board with certain members of this board to spend certain monies, and so you are going to get rid of him and put in a yes man who is going to then say yes to all the monies that you're proposing to spend, and there's at least three of you that have colluded and have met and talked outside of the public, the sunshine laws, in order to spend other people's money, our money. And I can't prove it yet, but I'm here to tell you, and these people know, the motivation for all this is not Jim, it's not you, it's money. Come back. When's the next meeting?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, what time?
Six.
And I expect all of you to be here to keep the, these people honest.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else?
Mayor, Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
I served on this board for four years, although I served a million meetings with you. I'm gonna tell you, Boe, what you're doing this morning, this man is wrong. In four years that I, I served on this board, this man never once disrespected me.
Come on, ma'am. You're talking to me.
Boe, me and you talked about this.
I know, but you was mad at that man so much, you wanted him gone.
No, I didn't, no. Boe, you're lying. Listen to me, Boe.
Me and you were friends, I ain't lie about this.
Boe, listen to me. Did you not promise me you would not call a special meeting?
No.
Yes, you did, Boe.
I did not, I told you I would not make a motion, I would not-
No, you promised me you would not call a special meeting, Boe.
When I got out of those phone calls Wednesday afternoon, with all the Indian windows that I knew were not true, some people putting taxes on there, and you know about this incident, where there was three votes to pay a man $7,000, and if we did it, so Miss Charlotte would resign, that is the biggest lie I ever heard. You know what happened.
Boe, that is never-
You know what happened.
Wait a minute, Boe, are you saying I said that, Boe?
No.
I never once said that.
Said what?
We're not gonna go into that, I'm not, I'm not about that.
I know, but you know what happened, we had five yes votes now.
I'm gonna stick to the facts, I know this man.
But I don't lie to people putting lies out there.
Boe, this man, we had disagreements, don't get me wrong, me and Jim had disagreements. We never agreed on everything. But there was a point in time when the city could not even pay its bills. This man steadied the ship, Boe. He has financially managed this city beyond belief, I'm telling you. Commissioner, I've served with Commissioner Bezett, he knows what I'm talking about. This man has done a, a young man's job, and for y'all to railroad this man, like y'all- Brett, I, I don't know what to say, Brett, I am so disappointed right now. I sit and I sit where you're sitting. You have, you have thoroughly disappointed me this morning. And Eric, I'm gonna tell you one thing. Jim Anderson does not make policy, y'all make policy. What gets done, y'all drive the policy. And if, if there's projects to get done, y'all drive those policies. It's not up to Jim. He's listening to five bosses, and that's the toughest job any man will ever do. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you. All right, is anyone else want to speak? All right. Where we at?
On the way out.
The only action we can take is to previously set for section 34. This time, it cannot be termination of employment. The only other action leaving is suspension. That's what section 34 says.
Or adjournment.
I would suggest the board to consider that option. You got a good man running the ship, let's let him run it, due process, play out.
I think that we shouldn't suspend him right now, should let him stay in the job that he's in until he have his, see in court or whatever, to discuss it any further.
Is there a motion?
I'm talking right now. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I feel like we shouldn't suspend him right now, we should leave him in the position where he can continue his job until he have due process, and we step back and, and see what the next step is. I'll make that a motion.
Got a motion on the floor, and we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Plus your key is five eight. I need a motion to adjourn. So we adjourn. Thank you, people. Thank you, sir.